It's Thursday, April 28th, 2022, and this is a special meeting of council. It is 5:30 and I am calling the meeting to order. Purpose of today's meeting is to have a public hearing regarding our tax levy bylaw. And we're going to be reviewing the budget this evening. So that is the only item on the agenda. A result, a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by Devlin, seconded by Duval, all in favor? That's carried. So with that, we do have a public hearing for our tax levy bylaw. And I would ask the CEO, please, to open the public hearing.
It resolved that council opened the public hearing of council for bylaw 2022-06, being a bylaw to levy taxes for the year 2022.
Thank you. Could I get a mover and seconded, please? Posthumous and Horracho, all in favor? It's carried. With the public hearing open, I'm going to walk all our guests here with us today through the a PowerPoint presentation. Provides an overview of our budget for this year. And at the end, we'll have an opportunity for any questions. So we have that PowerPoint up on the screen, please, Dane. Good to go. Okay, can't see it so. So thanks for attending tonight for East St. Paul Council's presentation of our 2022 financial plan. This is our third actual pandemic budget. On behalf of council, I'll be providing an overview of our financial plan via a PowerPoint. And then we'll open up the floor for questions or comments. Our acting C O, Jennifer Roll, and our financial officer, Dane Pishki, are with us tonight, available for questions. We'd like to start by always by sharing our vision and mission of East St. Paul. Our vision states that East St. Paul is a vibrant community with a distinctive lifestyle. And our mission statement is that our municipality is committed to ensuring sustainable, efficient, and controlled growth. We're dedicated to conserving our heritage and enhancing our recreation facilities. The objectives of the hearing this evening are to provide residents with an overview of the financial plan and give them an opportunity to ask questions, gather information, and provide feedback to council. If you'd like more details regarding the information presented today, you can contact our C O, Jennifer, at the office here. And this PowerPoint will also be posted on our website after the hearing today. The next slide demonstrates the financial planning process cycle that we go through in the R M. At the top of the cycle, we start with our departments preparing a preliminary budget. Their senior managers go through that budget and review it. And then council has as many working sessions as required to come out with a revised budget. Financial plan is then prepared by our CFO. And then we come to a public hearing where we are this evening. Tonight, we have first reading of the bylaw. And tomorrow, we do have a special meeting planned for second and third reading of the bylaw. The province has made changes to property assessments for 2022. Typically, reassessments occur every two years. But 2020 was a reassessment year based on property market values for April 2018. And this year was originally scheduled to be a reassessment year as per the two-year cycle. However, that has been amended by the province to three years due to COVID. And so the next assessment will now include the three years of 2020 to 2022, and it will occur in 2023. For this year, we use the 2020 assessments plus any adjustments to the role provided to us by the Selkirk Assessment Branch of the Province of Manitoba. And based on development activities since the reassessment. And this generally means any new builds since the previous assessment period. The next slide shows the assessment value of properties in East St. Paul. This year, we saw a 2.2% increase in property assessment. We're now sitting at $908 million. The next slide, I'm not going to read through the whole thing. It really demonstrates what your tax dollars are spent on in municipalities. And I heard somebody recently say that it's look out your window and it's pretty much everything you see around your community that your municipal taxes cover. Everything from fire protection to bylaw enforcement, our streets, our water, our sewer. And interesting enough, at the top of column two, we have flood control and E M L services. And they've been out on full force this last week. So really, the municipality does cover an extensive number of services. The next slide is provided for info as the province requires municipalities to collect school taxes on their behalf. And as such, they appear on the tax bill that you receive from the R M. School tax requirements are established by the school board and the province. The three areas that we've highlighted are the education support levy. And this year's support levy requirement, which only applies to commercial properties, will increase by 7.4%. The River East Transcona School Division, their tax requirement is decreasing by 0.2% over last year. And the last one is the change in the provincial government's education property tax credit. This year, the E P T C amount is changed to a maximum of $437.50. Additionally, property owners will receive a rebate check for 37.5% of the school division special levy payable on residential and farm properties. And this was a commitment made by the conservative government to reduce this tax credit, this cost. Next slide is identifies what our municipal mill rate is for 2022. And it's sitting at 8.473 with the budget that's being presented. And this is a 0% change over 2021, so the mill rate remains unchanged. Mill rate is comprised of three areas: taxation, reserve provisions, and general borrowing. And the following is a breakdown of that mill rate and those each amounts. Taxation accounts for 5.8, reserves 2.3, and borrowing is decimal 233%. And as I said, the mill rate has not changed from the prior year. We did make a special note under there that the 2021 Manitoba inflation C P I rate over last year is 3.3%. So when we look at just the residential mill rate, it has two components, the municipal and the school taxes for a total of 20.89%. And the total residential mill rate has decreased by 1.4% with those two components included. And the business mill rate has three parts. It has both the municipal and the River East Transcona School Division. And it also carries an educational support levy, again, additional. This is added by the province. And it's a school levy just for businesses. And the total business mill rate has also decreased by 1.3% over last year. So in summary, the changes on the mill rate for municipal taxes is zero. And school taxes overall has a decrease of 2.3%. So how do you calculate your tax bill? The mill rate applies to each $1,000 of assessed value. And only a portion of your property's assessed value is used for tax calculation. For residential properties, it's 45%, and for commercial portion, it is 65%. At the bottom of this slide, it shows the tax calculation. The assessment divided by 1,000 multiplied by the mill rate equals your tax bill. The next slide, what we do is we put in a half-million-dollar home, $500,000. And that's on the right-hand side of the slide under the 2022 column. So $500,000 divided by 1,000 multiplied by 45%, which is the portion of assessment for residential, multiplied by the total mill rate gives your total tax bill. The notation underneath that shows what the municipal tax portion is as well as the school tax. So for your $4,700 tax bill, 1,900 of that comes to the municipality and 2,700 of that goes to the school division. Overall this year, this assessment would result in an overall tax decrease of $65 for homeowners or a 1.4%. The next chart demonstrates the competitiveness of East St. Paul's mill rate with other R Ms in the capital region. We sorted this by highest mill rate to lowest. In the middle column there, I don't know, Dane, if you have, you can put your cursor on the 2022 column under mill rate. It starts with the highest mill rate in the area of 21.6 in Selkirk, 11% in Stonewall, 10% in St. Command's, 9.9 in St. Andrews, 9.6 in Springfield, 9.1 in West St. Paul, 8.4 in East St. Paul, 6.4 in Headingly, and 5.8 in Rosser. This just gives us a good idea of the competitiveness of our mill rates in comparison to areas around. Now, all of them have different challenges and different strengths and weaknesses. But certainly, the two below us, especially for note, the ones that have lower mill rates in East St. Paul, Headingly and Rosser both have significant business tax amounts. And Headingly has a lot of businesses on Highway One and Rosser has Central Port. So having a diversified and commercial tax base makes a big difference to the bottom line. And the municipal rate also does not include L I D rates that are not levied on the entire assessment value of the municipality. So we're unsure of that and how that ties into everybody's mill rate. But East St. Paul does not have any L I Ds, so our mill rate is as seen here. The next slide shows what a 1% change looks like in real dollars. So if we increase our property taxes by 1%, we would see an overall tax increase of 70, just under $77,000. The next slide shows the tax breakdown between school and municipal. It's been 60 for years. That's pretty much how it's run for the last seven years, for sure. And the next slide translates the mill rate and our tax collection into actual dollars. So municipal dollars collected through taxation come to 7.9, almost $8 million. This is up 169,000 over last year, primarily when we have new bills. Because again, the bills have been added and they're paying taxes. See those? Education dollars collected through taxation that we forward to the province are 11.7 million. And that is up very slightly at $17,000. So earlier, when I just made reference to business taxes and other R Ms, this is the slide that demonstrates our business tax analysis. Or I'm sorry, our tax analysis. And we have a really, I'll say, unhealthy balance of business and residential taxes. This has remained pretty much unchanged over a number of years. And we have a number of infrastructure constraints that certainly need to be addressed before this will have a significant change. But we also have a number of zoning issues and property constraints that don't give us the opportunity to have large business areas. But we rely almost exclusively on residential tax for our revenue. The next slide shows how we've been performing over the last four years of mill rates. And Dane, if you could, again, just highlight column number three, the percentage change on the first blue chart, the municipal one. Those four years from 2019 till this year, there's been a little bit of change back and forth in the mill rate. In 2019, we increased it by 2.2. Then in 2020, we decreased it by 5.3, went up slightly last year at 1.8. This year, it's at zero. And the next slide will show what that rolled-up number looks like in its decimal 34% of a decrease overall. And for school, the same, the same line, they've, besides 2019, they increased by 0.9. And after that, they've had decreases every year of 5.1, half a percent, and 2.3 for a total world up of a 1.76 decrease. And the next slide, Dane, shows that the municipal mill rate for your average is decimal 34 decrease. And the school mill rate is a 1.76% decrease. The next slide just provides a small overview of our capital expense planning. Each year, the R M allocates funds to reserves for long-range planning. Saving funds through reserves over a long period of time allows council to make large capital expenditures without a significant one-year impact to taxes or borrowing. And just to give an example of what this would look like, this year, we have $830,000 budgeted in our capital expenditures to purchase four large pieces of machinery. Contributions to a reserve for these upgrades have been made for many years. And payment will be straight, be a straight transfer from the reserves. But if we didn't have those reserves and we needed to allocate a tax increase this year just to pay for those pieces of equipment, this would equate to a 10.8 increase to the municipal mill rate. So it shows the importance of long-range planning. The next chart shows the planned capital expenditures for 2022, forecasted at $8.2 million overall, slightly less than last year. Last year, we had about $600,000 less planned expenditures. And the colors demonstrate the different departments where those expenditures are planned. No surprise, Public Works is the purple and most significant portion of our expenditures at $5.6 million. And the rest include administration, community services, engineering at almost $1 million, protection, sewer utility, and water utility at about $785,000. So just to highlight a few of our 2022 capital expenditures. Again, this comes out of reserves and doesn't affect the mill rate. The administration area is doing some upgrades to council chambers. We are finishing off the installation of the plaques in the plaza. Some computer equipment and the administration building L E D sign that's out front was a carryover bought in late into this year, so it shows up in this year's budget. In community services, we have some upgrades to our soccer baseball complex. We are adding an equipment garage for $105,000. Outdoor rinks, we're looking to replace all the boards on the two outdoor rinks for $140,000. Small amount of upgrades to the arena for 60. And curling club allocation, $35,000 that we grant to the curling club annually. On the next slide, it shows our engineering capital expense. And this is a looping project. And the funds for this come out of the federal grant for gas tax. And it's a $950,000 expenditure. And under protection, the fire equipment, $80,000, and E M O equipment, $50,000. And the biggest area of these capital expenditures this year is Public Works. We are allocating 418 to Park Upkeep. We saw over the last three years of the pandemic how important outdoor spaces and recreation outdoors is to our residents. So we have certainly in the last couple of years increased expenditures in these areas. So for $18,000 to Park Upkeep, we have some upgrades to our operations building for $175,000. The biggest area of expenditure is $2.1 million for road improvements, equipment replacement for $830,000, transfer station upgrades, $310,000, and a utility project under, again, the gas tax for $1.4 million. And some miscellaneous projects coming to $216,000. That totals up to $5.6 million. To give you an idea of our reserve balances, this chart demonstrates the balances of our general revenues and utility reserves since 2016. This number has pretty much continued to rise. Except for one year, it's increased annually to where we sit today at $22 million overall. An increase of $783,000 over next year. And this reserve amount is going to be critically important as we enter into the upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant, which is estimated well beyond the original estimates of 17 million. So it's in excess of that. And we're going to be depending on these revenues in part to help support the water treatment plant. The next area is the sewer utility. And this budget is an operating budget to be forecasted to be balanced, because it has to be. It's regulated by the Public Utilities Board and must be balanced, so it is. The revenue from the sewer utility is paid for primarily by service charges on a user pay. So only people hooked up to the sewer are paying for it. And the user charges are estimated at $1.9 million this year and small revenue from others at 172. Some of the operating expenditures from the sewer utility are $453,000 for administration, $85,000 for sewage collective, collection system, $59,000 for sewage lift station maintenance, sewage treatment and disposal, one of the main areas at $810,000. Smaller miscellaneous ones, capital expenditures at $230,000, adventure debt charges at $159,000, and a transfer out and a transfer in, which comes out to $2.1 million in total. 2022 capital expenditures in sewer have two items. The wastewater treatment plant design update. We spent over $1 million on this item last year. And we have an update to do this year, and so it's estimated at $150,000. And we are doing a study on sludge management, which is costing at $80,000. Next is the water utility. And much like the sewer, it is regulated by P U B and must be balanced. And for this year, the water utility revenue is estimated at $886,000. Again, it's only contributed to by those who are on the municipal water system. And the revenues are estimated at $810,000 this year and a small miscellaneous number from other sources. Operational expenses in the water utility are covered on personnel and administration, distribution, treatment plant, service of supply, some smaller items, capital expenditures at $785,000, and again, transfer in and out of the utility reserve. And that one capital expenditure is the water P L C upgrade. This is an ongoing project. It's in its third year. And this is to replace the computer system that controls our municipal wells. Glenway Special Services, this is a dual jurisdiction street in our R M at the south end off of Henderson Highway. In 1976, the R M entered into an agreement with the city of Winnipeg to provide East St. Paul property owners on the north side of Glenway Avenue with water, sewer, and drainage services. Annually, Glenway Avenue property owners are charged a flat rate on their tax bill as per by law 0602, identified as Glenway Special Services. The amount is based on the frontage costs for the services as invoiced by the city of Winnipeg. In 2017, property owners on Glenway were advised that the city of Winnipeg had increased the frontage levy from $4.35 a front foot to $5.45 per foot. And that was an increase then of 25%. And there hasn't been an increase since, and there are no changes contemplated for this year. The next slide just talks about council's continued efforts in some key areas. Strategic planning and development of long-term funding strategies for upcoming projects. And certainly, our key projects are wastewater treatment plant and our water, municipal water projects. Enhancing the community rec facilities and programs, preserving our heritage, improving the aesthetics of the community, promoting growth and development in the commercial business sector, promoting sustainable, efficient, and controlled growth in the residential sector with an emphasis on housing options for our senior demographic, and continually work to provide exemplary municipal operations and customer service. The last slide, again, iterates that this presentation will be available on our website. And a couple of important dates to note. Thursday, September 29th is our tax due date. And Thursday, October 6th, is our Board of Revision hearing for East St. Paul. So on behalf of council, including Councilor Posthumus, Horracho, Deputy Mayor Duval, and Counselor Devlin, I'd like to thank you for attending today. And I'll open up the floor now for questions and comments. Just for the public hearing at this point, thank you. Is this? Mr. Park, did you want to speak, ask any questions? You're on here for information only?
Oh, it's fine. I think I probably a few questions, but I think you'll probably get terrified.
As we go on today? Okay. I know we had one person signed online or they online. Okay. So at this point, is council ready to close the public hearing? Go ahead, please, John.
It resolved that council closes the public hearing of council for bylaw 2022-06, a bylaw to levy taxes for the year 2022.
I get a mover? Moved by Horracho, seconded by Duval, all in favor? That's carried. And I will ask the CEO, please, to read the resolution.
It resolved that bylaw number 2022-06, being a bylaw of the rural municipality of East St. Paul to levy taxes for the year 2022, be given first reading.
Thank you. Can I move it? Can I get a second or please? Horracho? We have the resolution on the floor. It's moved and seconded, and now I'll open it up for discussion.
Yeah, thank you. I spotted an error. Maybe the error was mine, Dane, but on page 13. Part one, first section. I believe that total, which comes to 16 million, for, I believe it's added, there's a subtool halfway down that column. And I think everything was added twice, or that subtool was added twice.
Yeah, that, yeah, I think you're right there, Brian. It shouldn't flow into any other parts of the document, I don't think. But you are correct there, so it'd be, yeah, the 7.2 plus the 1 million for the utility.
I'm not sure what that means, saying you're pressing the report. Another item that's I need now here.
Can I just clarify? Dane, if you want to come back to that after you've had just a few or two to review, to review it to make sure that we don't need to.
Sure.
Thank you. Go ahead, council.
Okay, as we all know, there's a proposal in the works for treating the pawns. And the the last draft of the budget that was, that council developed, there was an item in there for, under the section of And the, the last draft of the budget that was, that council dealt with, there was an item in there for, under the section of fourteen zero, environmental health services, there was an item in there for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty thousand cylinder operations for ponds treatment. And essentially, I'm asking for clarification on that. You replied that has been removed. And as I look at the environmental section of this plan here, the financial plan, it appears, yes, it has been removed. For a hundred and fifty some thousand dollars. Did that go anywhere else in the, in the financial plan? So it was removed altogether.
Correct.
Who authorized that removal?
That was part of the discussions we had during the budget deliberations, but because it wasn't being funded by mill rate. And it was being funded exclusively by the reserve funds, it's something that can be approved at, at a later date when there is more. When the decision was able to be made, it could just be approved through a resolution after the budget.
Do you remember any discussion on removing it? Now, this financial plan includes capital expenditures.
Correct.
So is that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the capital as well?
There's not.
So this document that we have presented here right now has zero funding for ponds treatments or capital expenses.
That's correct, so if it is approved at a later time, it would draw from our available reserve funds. Lower them from the current projected levels.
So we have a budget for capital expenditures, but we are planning to make adjustments to that even before this budget is approved. Is that a normal thing we do, we can just draw from capital later on? I know council can do anything at once, more or less, but we have a budget here with an item that was in there and it was removed.
Last, the CEO, just speak quick.
That is correct, if council wanted to do a project that could be funded strictly by the reserves, a resolution is suffice to pass that. It does not have to be included into the budget. So then, what, what is presented here tonight is correct. If you decided, if council decided as a whole that they wanted to do a project for, say, two hundred thousand dollars, and you wanted to pull it from one or two or three reserves. You can do that, we would simply pass a resolution stating what reserves those funds would be allocated from.
I know my memory isn't as good as it used. This deliberations around this table to remove that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that account, which is in operations. And we have a proposal from, as we all know, and we discussed many times, we have a proposal from a company to do the, the treatment of the ponds. And it matches that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars very closely for treatment. There's another proposal involved, which is capital for some equipment. Different expenditure. And I don't recall us discussing removing that.
If, if I'm not mistaken, that discussion happened during the last budget meeting. And there was a discussion that council had taken a vote, and it was agreed upon at that time that it was going to be removed. If, if I'm not mistaken, it was the last budget meeting, I don't believe Counselor Devlin, you were here for that, unfortunately.
Yeah, I would say primarily that's how things moved in and out of the budget like this. I don't think there's anybody sitting around this table that agrees with everything in it. We all wanted some things in that aren't there, and there's things in there we probably didn't support. But that's, that's how we went around the table and made decisions on what stayed in and what moved out. So that would be in alignment with that decision making.
Correct, and again, at tomorrow's special meeting of council, if council as a whole decides that they would like to withdraw, say, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. It is within your right, and we would pass a resolution allocating that those funds come from a dedicated reserve. So it is, it's still something that you can do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we've got the, the resolution moved and seconded. No final question, then I'll call for the question, all those in favor. And that's carried. All right. German, please.
It resolved, that's meaning me adjourned, the time being six fifteen PM.
Oh, Posthumus and Gretko, all in favor? That's carried, and the meeting is adjourned.